All right, I now call the September 2nd, 2025 Regular Meeting of City Council to Order. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by Brian Navarrens by, from the Calvary Chapel of Northern Kentucky. Hi, Brian.
If you would please join me in prayer. Our Lord and God, what a privilege, what an honor it is to be able to come before you. And we come to you with all prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, and the promise that you give peace that passes understanding with the mind of Christ. We thank you for your great provision, for a great place to live, for this privilege of gathering in this self-government and recognizing the responsibilities and freedoms that it carries. So we ask now, Lord, that our city officials be protective of those very precious and expensive rights that have been granted and guarded by brave men and women, and that they take the responsibilities to the residents of the city, the gravity and the wisdom they need and deserve without personal agendas or pursuits. That they be women and men of virtue, integrity, and with a heart of humble service. Therefore, we pray for wisdom for Mayor Fettig, for our city administrator, Mr. Collier, and for this assembled council. And we thank you for their service. Grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens and a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. I ask that you hold them to a high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. So we pray also for Chiefs Raider and Godsey and all our first responders, and thank you for them also, and keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. We ask for your blessing upon them and their families, Father. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda that is set before them today. Please make clear to them what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Erlanger. That they remember, as your word says, "Trust the Lord and do not lean on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make your path straight." So let us not arrogantly think that what we will do, that we will do this or that in the coming year, but only as you will it. And it's in the most blessed name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Brian. All right, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can please take role. Mr. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Present.
Ms. Fields.
Here.
Mr. Hermes.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Ms. Nicely.
Present.
Ms. Rackers.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
All right, great. Thank you so much. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes for August 5th, 2025 Regular Council Meeting and the August 26th, 2025 Special Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Mr. Farmer, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Mr. Cahill, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Onto special presentations this evening. Our first is our Business Spotlight. I will turn it over to Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Business Spotlight tonight is Jim Devaney. Jim Devaney, and he told me his dog's name, and I've already, it's Memphis, okay. Jim Devaney is the owner of Four Paws K-9 Training. Jim, would you like the floor for a minute to tell the folks in the audience, our council members, our mayor and staff, a little bit about your business?
So Four Paws has been partnering with Alley's Walkabout for the last 10 years. We were actually on a property just down the street from where we are right now. So we share the same property at 2844 Crescent Springs Pike. And it's a pretty simple relationship. Alley's provides boarding and training, I'm sorry, boarding and daycare, and we provide training. So we do some board and trains and daycare and trains out of Alley's. We have some other services that include a different kind of a board and train as well. But, you know, we're proud to be in Erlanger and proud to call Erlanger our home. So we thank you for letting us be here.
Well, thank you, Jim. And just to note, my kids are in the audience right now, Benny and Landon. And guys, just so you know, dogs usually don't come here, so you don't have to come here that often. We'll tee up your video, and as a reminder, this is a gift from the city of Erlanger to you and your business.
Thank you. So in the beginning, I thought, well, most of dog training is training dogs, where 70% of it is training people, and the other 30% is the dog. That was something to behold. I was always interested in training my own dogs, training dogs for even some of the neighbors. Well, that just provoked my interest and instilled a compassion in me that I didn't necessarily know was 100% was there early on. But it was like finding your passion in life, and that happened to be for me. So the second career has developed out of that. And so one day I said, I'm gonna go get certified as a dog trainer. I said that to my wife, and she said, then what are you gonna do? I said, obviously, I'm gonna start dog training. I said, but I own up with my own business. I met the Kleigs at Alley's Walkabout, and we hit it off, and we've been partnering for the last, I guess, nine to 10 years. We're blessed to be where we are. This is four and a half acres, and there's three yards out to the side of us here, and we get to work with the dogs outside, so there's Alley's. And, you know, in general, we've got a residency program. We've got, like I said, the classes. But I think the most surprising thing was how important it is to understand the psychology of people and how it relates to their animals. You know, if we can get the people to understand what to do and how to do it, that's gonna make a huge difference in, you know, the progress and the accomplishments and the overall success we're gonna have with the humans and with their dogs.
All right, fantastic. All right. Thanks, Jim, for coming here and bringing Memphis. I've met Memphis before. Pretty awesome. All right. Our next special presentation is our Oath of Office. All right, we're gonna do city administrator first. All right, this is a pretty momentous occasion. So I met Mark Collier back when we went through Leadership Northern Kentucky Class of 2020 together. And I don't know if we could have seen this coming. But it's amazing, the relationships that you develop through Leadership Northern Kentucky. I know that's, Jack had met Kara Kramer. That's how we got introduced to our wonderful finance and HR directors. So it's a testament to how beautiful Leadership Northern Kentucky program is and how it does create a network and develop relationships that you never would have maybe had. So thank God for our Class of 2020, as terrible as it was. So Mark is such an extraordinary member of our team, a true visionary. I think he was like the cool older brother in the office, and now he's like the dad of the office. So it's pretty amazing to see you blossom into this role. And I know Peter was extraordinarily comfortable with your leadership and stepping into this role. So congratulations.
Thank you. This is a huge honor for me, Mayor. Thank you. Council, very lucky to be in this position right now. And to the residents and staff, thank you for being here. I'm gonna give everything that I've got to this city and to every single employee that is here. I will do everything in my power to make this the best place to work in Northern Kentucky. Want to thank my family for being here today, all of them. You guys are great and have always been a great support, Lindsey, Benny, Landon, no dogs. And just to follow up on the dual comment, it is not a deadly weapon, but Nerf guns count, right, guys? Yeah, okay. Thank you. I love the city of Erlanger, and I'm gonna work my tail off. Thanks.
All right. Okay, now we have some firefighters. Do you wanna, did you say anything before?
Just say, council, guests, Mayor, tonight we're gonna do the Oath of Office for three of our new firefighter EMTs. We've got firefighter EMT Jonathan Jimenez, firefighter EMT Michael Cawthon, and firefighter EMT Xavier Campbell. You guys wanna come forward?
Your family's here?
Whoever's in one of your, and guests?
All right. All right. I love when fires in the house. They support each other so well. Thank you guys for all being here. All right. That concludes our special presentations for this evening. Now comments from those other than council members. We have one individual signed up, Mr. Scott Kimick. There is a button to press on the microphone. There we go.
The green light. Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Gatlin, members of the staff, my name is Scott Kimick. I'm a 26-year resident of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, and I'm here tonight because I frequently watch your meetings on television. I'm somewhat of a local government geek, and that's my spare time. A few weeks ago, I was watching as a member of the body engaged in an exchange with the mayor and members of council and city employees on an issue regarding the property line, or sewer line, repair on the property of a fellow council member. Now, let me be very clear. I am not here to debate the issues surrounding the underlying facts or actions taken by council. As I understand, the city attorney has already addressed that issue, and the issue is closed. I'm here before you because I believe that there is a twofold issue that needs to be addressed. First, in my 40 years of experience in local government dating clear back to 1986, I've attended a lot of council meetings, hundreds of them, many in these chambers and in the previous Erlanger City Council. I have never seen a discussion take place in which employees were, for lack of a better term, cross-examined about an issue that had occurred in this city, particularly when the county, city attorney advises this issue should not be discussed. Members of council, I would caution you that there's a reason a city attorney says the issue shouldn't be discussed, because if you continue to discuss it and you bring forth information that could result in litigation, mediation, or a declarations right against the city, your legal fees will be borne by the city council, not by your insurer. And those costs can far exceed the costs that were expended on the repair of this sewer line. I believe it was a difficult situation that was only made worse. The second issue that brings me here tonight is that in researching this and a number of other issues, I see that we have a number of committees, ad hoc committees, and there's a frequent communication between council members in emails. Folks, I would caution you that when an ad hoc committee, a regular committee, a committee of the whole, has a meeting, everything you discuss has to be of public record. And if you're discussing the meeting before the meeting in emails and submitting emails to chairs to craft notes that are gonna be used for setting public policy, the actions you're taking are subject to the review of the Attorney General and to be overturned. Now, I know it's easy to do. Government has gotten very technologically savvy. The statute has not kept up. The statute doesn't allow two members of council or six members of council to discuss an idea in an email and come here and vote on it. In fact, the Kentucky Supreme Court, and you have to excuse me, I'm not the most technologically savvy, said the public business is not simply any discussion of the various alternatives to a given issue. Public business is the discussion of the various alternatives to a given issue about which the agency has the option to take action. The Attorney General has further opined a public agency is not excused from the prohibition of discussion of public business outside the meetings open to the public simply because no action was taken. My friends, I know it would extend these meetings. It would make them more lengthy. It would force more discussion. But the statute and the crafters of that statute intended for the public to know. I know that as I sat and heard that discussion, there have may have been very valid points on both sides. But having not seen any of the emails that were discussed, there's no way to know. And then what was brought up at a subsequent meeting by Mr. Hermes at a caucus meeting, the response was, everything's resolved. Well, I'm glad it was resolved, and I'm glad the council got the answers to their questions. I'm glad the property owner was not in any jeopardy, and city employees were found to have done nothing inappropriate. But the public had a right to know. And while nothing was done, public policy is about perception. And when we're doing business through emails that are not public record and that no one sees, it creates a public perception nightmare. So I would ask you to please, if you're gonna use emails to communicate, that's fine. Just put the emails in the record at the next meeting, give them to the clerk, and have them posted as exhibits. But let the public know what you're discussing and what's going on. Madam, Mary, I think you did a fine job that night as a presiding officer. You were under a tough, tough situation, Mr. Gatlin. You did all the only thing an attorney can do and say, don't discuss this. Mr. Gatlin, you did all, the only thing an attorney can do is say, don't discuss this. My only admonition to you, Mayor, is if it ever happens again, just keep banging that gavel until the person either gets quiet or the meeting adjourns, because something could have very well come out that would have cost the taxpayer significant dollars in the end. So I thank you all for your attention tonight. I'm sorry to be here as a griper, but when I watch it on television and see it, somebody's got to speak up. So thank you all very much, Madam Mayor. And I did not come here for a debate.
Okay. Thank you. He said he didn't come here for debate. Go for it.
I don't believe Mr. Kimick is an attorney. I also am under the impression that all of our emails are subject to open records, which is what I've been told for the last four years, is that, I'm not debating with anyone, I'm asking our city attorney.
Yeah, absolutely, your emails will be subject to open records.
So none of our email correspondence is not subject to open records?
I would agree with that.
Okay. The only other thing I'll say, and this is not for debate, you said you didn't want a debate, so you can have a seat, but I am going to say something.
Madam, I would like to respond to one thing. I've never held myself out as an attorney, as was asserted by the general councilwoman, and I'm not an attorney. Don't profess to be. Didn't say I was.
Can I finish now? One more thing. That's all. Mr. Kimick said something shouldn't be discussed in public, but then in the next sentence said that it should only be discussed in public, and it can't be both ways.
All right. That concludes public comment. Mayor's report. Welcome. I'm so glad to have you here. We're blessed every day. So thank you. Do you have a report?
I just have a brief comment. We had discussed the community engagement coordinator position at the last council meeting, I believe, and tasked her with potential, her first project. Just wanted to report, we did make that hire, and she did start today. Her name is Lauren Gross, and Lauren comes to us via FC Cincinnati, where she did events and grassroots promotions for the club for about four years. She's already hit the ground running. We jam-packed her day today. So Chief Godsey, Chief Rader, Sergeant, actually Lieutenant Clark, and then Public Works Director Kevin Quinn and Jason Ims kind of showed them the robes, that Public Works, Fire, Police. She's got her new office set up, so just be forewarned, she is going to start reaching out to engage with staff, members, and the community. And that's truly why this position was needed. So just an FYI, Lauren Gross is now a proud employee of the city of Erlanger. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Gatlin?
Yeah, just briefly, just want to welcome Mark to the team, even though you've been on the team for a while. Look forward to working with you. I know that you and I have already communicated a lot. I think you're going to be a great communicator for the city. And you have a beautiful family. And I agree with your dad, dogs, no.
I have two and agree. All right, Mr. Collier, do you have any special reports, capital projects?
Yep. Few things to report on capital projects. I guess, well, let me ask, I'm still playing new guy card, Ms. Hoffman, is this where we're reporting out the bids? Okay, then no, I do not have anything right now.
Well done. All right. Any task force representatives? Yes?
I just wanted to remind everyone, we haven't had a beautification task force meeting the last couple months, but we will have our next one on Tuesday, October 7th at 5:30 here at the city building. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, it's bedtime. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
On August 19th, the Small Business Task Force met, and we did a look back of the grants that were issued in the last fiscal year, and also took a look at the pipeline of things that are coming down the way. And we evaluated with the budgetary increase that we allotted for this year, for this fiscal year. We also wanted to see if there were any proposed changes to be made for this fiscal year that we wanted to propose to council. The only thing that we are looking to potentially change is adding an additional, additional program. So we are in the process of doing research and are planning to meet in October, and once we have discussed these options, we plan to bring it to council. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I had given the wrong date. It should be Tuesday, October 21st, sorry.
Okay.
If we can make that correction, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bid time.
Now it's bids. Okay, three bids. The first is for the Deer Chase Thorn Tree Sky Street Improvements. That was awarded to Regler Blacktop in the amount of $317,840.50. That was our low bid, so we are moving forward with that. The second bid is the Eons Adventure Park Phase 1. That was awarded to Jefferson Contracting in the amount of $484,144, which is under budget, and they were able to hit our timelines as well. So that was awarded for those two reasons. The third is not capital, but it is for fire. We, this is for a new ambulance, and that was awarded to Penn Care in the amount of
All right, great. All right. Seeing your questions, I'll move on. Any unfinished business? Okay. New business, we do not have any items on the caucus meeting agenda, so we are going to cancel that meeting for September. All right, and legislation? Yes?
Can I just give a couple compliments, or you want me to do that at the end?
Um, I'm sorry.
Compliments. I just had to give a couple compliments. Do you want me to do that under new business or?
We are in new business right now.
Do you want me to do that now?
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to compliment Sherri and Melissa, the new display at the Depot Museum is awesome. So if someone hasn't stopped by there, you need to check the city site to see the opening hours, and you won't want to miss it. And also, I wanted to compliment our fire police and first responders. Everyone had saw in the news, saving the life of the gym owner and stuff, so I wanted to compliment, we have the best first responders, and I don't know how many people have approached me when they've seen it on the news or seen it on Facebook, that article, and said we have the best of the best, which we all do know that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other new business? Okay. Legislation?
All right, we have an ordinance submitting the zoning map of the city of Erlanger County of Kenton, an area of approximately 1.26 acres located at 3208 Dixie Highway, north of Dixie Highway and south of the railroad in Erlanger from CC, which is Community Commercial Zone to the GI General Industrial Zone. This did come before the Kenton County Planning Commission for a public hearing, and it was recommended with the, you can see the, sort of the stipulations which are attached in Section 1. I would ask that we approve the zoning request with those stipulations, and it was also based on testimony provided at the public hearing at KCPC on July 8th of 2025.
All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Reckers? Mr. Farmer? Any discussion? All right, roll call, vote please.
Ms. Wilson? Ms. Nicely?
Yes.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, providing for the annual assessment of all real estate and personal property within the city of Erlanger, which is subject to taxation thereby, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2026, and providing for the payment and collection of such taxes and the penalties and interest thereon, and describing the purpose for which the tax is so collected shall be appropriated and used, and continuing to fund a special fund called the Park Improvement Fund to support the ongoing development of new and existing parks. The ad valorem tax rate on real property shall be at the rate of .244 for each $100, and the ad valorem tax on all personal property other than motor vehicles shall be at the rate of .178 for each $100. Those are both the compensating rates and are both lower than last year's tax rates. It also does establish the Park Improvement Fund, where 12% of the real estate tax revenue shall be allocated to the Park Improvement Fund.
All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Mr. Hermes? Mr. Farmer? Any discussion? All right, roll call, vote.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fields?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Congratulations, guys. Just passed your 11th tax rate decrease in the city of Erlanger. It's awesome. I don't think anywhere in the entire world can tout that accomplishment. Hear that, Link NQI? All right, motion carried.
All right, next we have a resolution, and probably should have a little background. I think, Mark, you sent out an email to all the council that kind of just explained what we were doing tonight. And really, we apologize internally that this did not come up first at a caucus meeting. The reality is, is you're going to have another opportunity, and there's going to be a lot of opportunity for discussion for this in the future, but it kind of, it really popped up, and I think we were a little surprised that there was a garage requirement in the RMF zone. I'm not sure if that was a Z21 issue or not. I know that some of these little glitches have been coming up in Z21, but the idea being that, you know, to simplify it, to require multifamily housing and apartments to have detached garages is really kind of a burden for a couple developments that we're looking at bringing in. So this is a text amendment that requires, that takes the requirement of detached garages away as a requirement in the multifamily residential zone. And all this is, is just a resolution to allow Mark to make the application to PDS for their recommendation, and then ultimately, the public hearing would be in front of KCPC, and then based on that recommendation, it would come back to this body, which we're going to ultimately have a first and second reading. So this is just to begin the process, and there is something in the works that unfortunately we want to get this application in by Thursday, I believe.
All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Ms. Reckers? Mr. Hermes? Any discussion? Yes.
I had a quick question based on what Mr. Gatlin said. Was this something that was ever even enforced? Because when I read the memo, I was like, I can't think of any time when, I mean, I can think of multiple multifamily developments in Erlanger that don't have garages and never had garages.
Right, and that's why, I know this came up as an issue a few years ago. I don't know this for absolute sure, but I'll look up before our next meeting. I think this was a Z21 addition. Some of these things got tweaked a little bit in Z21, because again, to your point, there is not a lot of multifamily in all of Northern Kentucky that has detached garages. In fact, a few that I'm aware of have their own issues, because people use them as storage units, and they create their own issues to the cities, frankly. So I mean, we looked at it internally, and we're like, is this something we want? Does this make any sense? And I think we've generally of the belief that it really doesn't make sense.
We actually looked at this last year, the Commonwealth Station Townhomes there. Not the same type of zone, but they had to also try to figure out how to build detached family there. That lot was very, very small. We talked about going through the text amendment process during that time, and we didn't. So now we've got some other things on our plate that are an opportunity for us that we wanted to get ahead of a little bit.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. Are there any announcements this evening? All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Wilson? Ms. Nicely? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.